Okay, he said it has.
So why you here to church?
You're going to need some stuff to set this better.
Are you helping them work out?
Maybe not sure if that did.
Or can we get a paper? Do you need some paper? I have become the paper person. Why you here?
Uh, good evening to that over fifteen twenty four for the management organization.
Mr. Neil? Here's here. Mr. Murphy? Here. Mr. Dale's here. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Let's hear your reports.
So, um, CBCC update, um, Mrs. O'Neal, she is out of town for this meeting, so she came to our work session, um, a couple weeks ago. Provided us, um, with the CBCC updates, um, talked a little bit about the number of programs that they have at CBCC. And how many of our students are reading those programs from local reading and reading class. And then immediately before that, she provided us some additional information, um, about our students. She talked a little bit, um, just about our first year enrollment and then our second year enrollment with our seniors. Also shares some information on the new project that they have going on at CBCC where they are building the new, um, this construction tree, um, area. They already have a waiting for that program, um, and so they'll be starting construction on that very soon. Um, we're kind of starting some of the demo and sort of construction, because that's a big project that they're working on as well. Uh, it's kind of a great board that had discussions with, um, you know, you know, the boss, uh, that especially part of our team of the CBCC board. Um, you did a great job, I think, um, Mrs. O'Neal coming in, she's got that educational background, uh, it's her passion. Uh, and so, and we've had education, so she's really passionate about this position on the board. Excited to join our meeting, um, to be able to be that liaison between what the CBCC is doing. And, um, giving that information to us as a board and community, um, as a whole.
One thing you're gonna notice from us up here is a little dance or back and forth, is we have two procedural pages starting tonight. Uh, one of which is going to be Board Docs, which is a website platform where we do the governance through that. So the agendas will be located there and it's a really wonderful program to try to streamline and make things more efficient. But in the first month and a half or two, we might be a little clunky as we get used to it together of where we find it, how we log in and do that. So you'll notice we're all feverishly trying to make sure that we pull it off seamlessly and you don't even notice. We're using an electronic platform till you go to look for the agendas. So, uh, the agendas, well now you'll see two separate sections on the website if you're looking at it. And agendas from the fifteenth of October forward will be through Board Docs, we're not loading batch data, we're just going forward with it. So, the nice thing that if people do start perusing Board Docs that you'll notice is there's a search feature which makes it really nice to search for something. If you're looking for one specific thing like Mrs. O'Neal's update from September, you can go in and just type her name in the search bar and it comes up that way very nicely. Um, and all the documentation is loaded into it. So, now board members will have the documents available to them electronically very quickly as we load them in, they'll be able to see that to prep for meetings. So, that's one of our changes that you'll see Tony and I kind of ban, like, looking back and forth, taking cues from one another as we get that down pat. And the second one is, uh, for the agenda purposes, we're running on a consent agenda now. So, what that, we used to do just personnel on consent, but now we're gonna do the whole agenda on consent. And what that means is that, uh, you'll see the items specifically labeled consent agenda. We'll still speak and discuss about all the topics, but instead of having an individual resolution in motion on every item, which kind of belabor's the point of be it resolved all the time, you're gonna see us go through our items and then have one, um, one approval for all those consent items. But should there be a conflict or some kind of need, um, sometimes like for me in the auditor's office, they need special resolution numbers. I would be, sometimes we'll pull things out and you'll notice them being pulled out and there would be a reason, a rationale behind that being pulled out. So, um, that is our consent agenda change, is there anything else? Like, one example is tonight, we're gonna have something pulled out, um, Mr. Avila actually can, wants to abstain from a vote. And so, we will, you'll see it tonight being in action where we abstain, we pull something out when someone needs to abstain for something. So, um, that is, it is exciting and it should help make the meetings more efficient and a little bit quicker too. So, that's one item and then another item I have to just make, uh, announcement is we did a cash audit for transition for us. During the transition of Mr. Kaler to myself and it's really just a protection for all the parties involved in the district, just to verify all the cash balances. And that came back today actually and everything checked out beautifully. So, um, all cash is accounted for on all accounts and, um, it's just kind of a nice reassurance that a public separate entity did verify that and everything is accurate. Um, then lastly, um, I know next November, everyone will be here in attendance excited to hear the five-year forecast. And it's amazing presentation, which I look forward to, but I'm not sure all the folks look forward to the presentation. But I'm working feverishly on that, trying to finalize revenues, we have some TIF changes occurring, one came on. We have some delinquents being paid on, we're still waiting for reappraisal values to come in, to be certified to us. So, there's a lot of moving parts on the revenue side, expenses are a little bit easier right now to project. Um, and we'll be working on that and I'll be presenting that in November. And, um, in general, as you, as I go through my appropriations, you're gonna, um, see we need to do a change in appropriations. So, um, we're gonna, that would be it for me, I believe.
Jen, do you want to talk just a little bit about the insurance committee meeting?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we had our first insurance committee meeting today, it was, I would call, um, we're bringing the community committee back. I, I believe it was here prior, but it had faded away a little bit. So, today we met, um, and it was really wonderful, we had Assured Partners, who's our third-party administrator come. And they spoke to the different plans we have, questions for employees. Um, one of the things that I think was pretty abundantly clear is we need, we can, as you always can, do a better job of communicating. But we can focus on maybe communicating health insurance changes better to the staff. And that one great way to do that is through this committee, um, and I'm looking forward to the work they're doing, that we will be doing. So, um, in my past experience was this was the vehicle to get information to staff about what the plans are, what's covered, what's not covered, why did something change? Why is something not changing? Um, what new programs are out there, like for telehealth if it's available to us and if it is, how do we get there? So, um, one of the things I would like to do and a goal is to have a little bit of an insurance area on the website where staff can go and find the flyers and get that information. So, um, also as you head into negotiations, a committee like that is really important to understand the cost structure, the plan design, what's available to us, what small things can happen, what big things can happen, so that we're all on the same page. So that it's not quite as much of a discussion when negotiations come. If you're constantly discussing such a large expense for both employee and the employer, then when you come to negotiations, it's really not, it's not really a huge topic because it's been a focus every time you're meeting, so we'll be meeting at least four times a year.
And who's on this committee?
That's a great question, that would be a quiz of names for me, I know, Kelly and I.
Joe Durney, um, there's usually two from each of the, the buildings, Debbie Clegg, Nikki Lee, uh, from the primary. And then, um, middle school was Ken.
Scott.
Ken Scott, um, or Ken and Scott.
Vicky, Vicky Campus.
Yes, and then, um, from the high school, it was, um, Mark Corpus, he was not there today. We, um, we found out today that he should have been on the invite. Um, and then also, um, who else did I miss, Joe Durney?
Chuck Schroder and Dave Mance.
Dave Mance. Who was it?
You.
Yes, okay, so that's who we need to add as well. So, at least representatives from each of those buildings, plus the union president and vice president. And then classified, obviously, as well.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, no, I.
We're good?
I, I had a lot to say.
I actually have some things for you guys, um, just wanted to give you an update, uh, our last work session, I told you that we had. Bids were coming in and I wanted to give you a copy of our bid tabulation sheet from the two, um, things we went out for bid and I'll talk about each of these.
Thank you.
I almost sabotaged your power.
So, in no particular order, I just, what's on top of mine here is security vestibule. Um, this is the one where the Bureau of Workman's Comp is offering out a grant, um, up to forty thousand dollars. It's a three-to-one matching grant, so basically we pay, uh, twenty-five percent of the cost up to forty thousand dollars, they'll reimburse us. And so, um, this project far exceeds, uh, the amount we would get to go beyond forty, I mean, if it was unlimited, it would be obviously a lot higher. Um, but that would essentially, our lowest bid came in at a hundred thirty-eight thousand. And so we would, if we applied for the grant and got it, then we would be, um, responsible for ninety-eight thousand dollars to complete that security vestibule. This is in the realm of kind of what we had thought last year when we were going through this, remember this was a really detailed process as far as finding out what would fit fire code, you know, when you're trying to retrofit a space into an older building, um, you're, you're, you're subject to all the newest codes. And so there are challenges in design from that and, um, we went through a lot of, um, discussion to get to a point where we got something that would, would work. And by the time we did, uh, Bureau of Workman's Comp ended their grant and so we thought we were done. And this, uh, before school started in August, it was brought to my attention that they opened it back up. And so now it's kind of like a first come, first served basis. But the way BWC works with their grants is you have to go do all this legwork, award a contractor and then officially apply for the grant. I'm sure that works.
We might not get it.
Right, so the work that I did in, in the front part, um, was more of is this something that fits? And so I did have it reviewed, but nothing official. So, um, we can move forward to apply for this grant and then ultimately make a decision. So, this is a fine time, I'm not asking you to make any decisions tonight, I am asking you to think about this because the next time we meet, I'm gonna wanna have discussion and, and possibly have you vote on this. But I don't know where we're landing, so you're gonna have a lot of questions and I'm just giving you this information now so that you can ask me questions as we go through this. The, um, the companies know who got the lowest bid, they were present, the one who won the bid has done work for us. In fact, we're sitting in the room right now of the work, they, they did this. And so, um, part of the process is you vet out different, uh, the people who win the, the award or win the bid. And, um, so for the security vestibule, obviously we have, we have firsthand knowledge of how this company operates and, and so forth. And so, it's just really just a decision if we want to move forward with this. The next one is the window wall, um, that's at the middle school. And, um, this project here, um, well, that's interesting, it's kind of written, it must have been how we, we opened them. So, because the cheapest one's on the bottom, uh, the, the lowest one. So, we, um, we have started the vetting process for Warren Roofing, which won this bid. And, um, the final report and recommendation has not come back from our architect firm, uh, but it will and I expect it to be, I expect it to be good news. Um, but this also is something where I wanted to present with you, present to you today and to say, look, we're here, we're at the, we're at the decision moment right now. This would require board action and so this is for the next meeting as well. Um, should you have questions throughout the time, I'll answer any you have now if you want. Or you can process some and then have some ready for me as we lead up to, or that evening, um, whichever, whichever you prefer. But that's the, uh, this has been a lot of, this is a lot of work and it's not common that these happen simultaneously like this. We've never operated where we've had two, what I consider larger projects happening at the same time. The fact is, all the legwork on the security vestibule was finished and so we just really had to tweak dates. Um, and the, the most recent amount of work was on the window wall, getting the specifications and things necessary for that, for that window wall, so.
Tom, did I understand that they have changed the law now so that we don't have to take the lowest bid if you find that there's something, um?
That's a hundred percent true, they changed that back in, I think it was around, in the mid-two thousands, it was right after this building was built. So, um, they, that's funny, it's funny and it's true. So, they, um, no, we do not have to, so that's why we do a vetting process. So what happens is the architect firm, if they've worked with them, and, and in this case they have, um, but they will also reach out to other, um, engineers and architects in their firm who might have done some work with them, they'll reach out to the customers. And so we do a vetting process to see, you know, you look for things like did they finish on time, did they, what was their quality of work? And so our, the, the company that we use, our architecture, they do that vetting. I, of course, reach out to my people and say, hey, what have you heard? And so in this case for Warren Roofing here, um, I'm still looking because they're branching into this, they're kind of dipping into this roof-to-window system piece. So they're kind of earlier in the stages, but they have completed some projects.
We did vetting too, but.
Yeah, but back then when they did that, like, you really did have, you'd have to really provide evidence. But there's previous history with contractor, there's, um, you have to, you have to show why you would not be going with them. And so we've done that for each of the projects that we've done here, because we've not always gone with the, the lowest bid. Uh, we've gone with the most responsible bid and I think that's the terminology that they use.
That's a nice change.
So, does, does this bid include the architect's fees or is that?
It does not, architect fees are completely separate.
How much are those approximately?
Usually seven to ten percent, but however, I, I'd have to, I'd have to get back to you on that one, I don't have an exact dollar amount. And they're different per project too.
Right, right, and then, obviously, we wouldn't be doing construction, I'm talking about the primary school one during the school year, that would be done.
So, what makes these intriguing, and that's, and I did this on purpose. We left a very wide opening for this work to be done, which is why it appealed to the contract, to construction companies. We had six companies show up, um, for, for the windows and then I think five showed up for the security vestibule, although only two bid on it. Um, it, we did this because we said you can work over any break, each or none, but it had to be completed and be completed by summer. And so someone might look at that security vestibule and say, I can knock this out in two weeks. If I dedicate a crew, I'm gonna do it. And so when it's slow for them or they know if they start it, they have to bring it, bring the area up to functionality that it can't. So there might be a wall up, but it's still functional. So that's, that actually is the appeal and I, and I was speaking to some of the contractors who've been on this and they said that was definitely a bonus because we could really space out times, but there will not be kids, um, in the building at all for either of these. Well, that's not true, the window wall, because it's isolated, we can do that during the day, because we would relocate the classroom.
But as far as the primary school is concerned, though.
No, no.
For lack of a better word, they'll be working nights and weekends and, and during our office.
They'll only work during breaks, that's it.
And what is it, do we have any kind of blueprints or what it looks like? Is it gonna kind of look like what the high school looks like, what, can you give us an idea of like?
I'll give you an idea and give you blueprints too, because I do have an aerial view of what it would look like. So when you walk through the doors of the primary school, you know that big mat that's right there? Go ahead and put some walls up right there and that's now the entrance way. To your left will be a greeting window, like a, for the secretary. And then enclosing that whole area, because this is an expansion of the main office as well. And so, um, Cindy Lou and, um.
Tor.
Tori, Victoria would be in the front and then TJ's office would move, Brooke would come over that way as well. Um, but when a visitor comes in, there would be a seating area for them. Straight ahead would be two double doors that would have to be opened, secure, you know, buzzed open for them to be able to, but they'd be blocked off from entering the school. And so they wouldn't wait outside, they would be able to walk right in and, um, and just kind of go to the, the counter, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, um, going to the, the window wall, is that, you mentioned that the one is that roofing company that, that, um, is dabbling now in windows, but.
They have a window division, they're trying to expand it, that's what they're trying to do.
The, uh, is that roof above, is that part need to be done?
They would have to fix the fascia up on the top there, and so that would be the extent of it. Does, does the roof eventually have to be done?
Yeah, that's part of what was not done.
Exactly.
Like five years ago.
That's right where it stopped.
Oh, really?
Yeah, like it did, like that would have been next.
Okay, okay.
And I know we've had a lot of projects going on, I've, I feel like I'm being blindsided by this number.
Which one?
The, the three hundred thousand, practically for the windows. And I just am wondering, like, I've been in many wrestling rooms and most of them don't have windows. And so, is this necessary? Like, we haven't talked about what we're doing about the buildings. And I feel like if we don't go this route, it would, it's, it, it doesn't have to be done, right? Like, when, we don't need new windows, I mean, the building needs new windows, but I mean, we're not, are we strictly doing this for the wrestling team? Like, is that one of their requirements or?
Hmm, no, like, everything you're saying is true, like, we don't have to have windows, we'd have to do some sort of modification to make that space safe. Um, the, the building desperately needs windows and so it begs the question of what we've been saying for months now is, as a district, we need to decide what we're doing. And 'cause, you're right, when I saw the number, I thought, wow, you know, I mean, two sixty-seven's the winning bid, it's still two sixty-seven. Um, the estimate was about two fifty to, or it was three fifty is what they had thought, so it came in under and my response was, well, that's not what it would have been a couple of years ago, so windows are increasing. So, no, it's not, it's not essential for that to happen, for the wrestling room to, to occur. I would have to do some sort of modification to be able to make that happen, um, so, I mean.
I just want to, I just.
And I think you had asked me at one time about, do we, do we need windows in the room? Um, I don't have prices, but my opinion is this, you either do something or nothing. But this idea of let's fill in with block because we don't need windows, because I've heard it from a couple of people, we're still spending cost. And it's still, at the end of the day, comes down to that question that you just, like, we don't even know what we're doing.
Right, and that's why this number is huge and I, I personally don't feel like it's something we have to do. I mean, if the rest, it's not a necessity to have it, I mean, I jokingly said the one time, let's, let's brick it in, I don't know what, I don't know.
Some other people have said that to me, they say, can't we put cinder block in there? And I said, you'll be very surprised at the cost of what that would be in itself. And so, you know, where we, it's just making the decision on what we would, what we'd want to do. I knew we would have to adjust some because we have to raise it to six feet to allow for the wall mats. Um, there was a suggestion of putting, uh, temporary wood wall up there, um, I mean, we've spent a lot of money on this room already. There's already been a lot.
And that's why I just, I want to put this on the table, that this doesn't have to be done, I mean, the windows don't have to be done. And so, I want us to explore, like, other options and, um, it'd be a better financial decision for us as a district.
And just so we know, like, right now, like, two of the windows are boarded up with, like, cardboard and we can eventually, and so as those windows break, we replace them with additional plywood. Um, and so then there's that. And so then there's that whole idea of the, what it looks like from the outside. And so we just need to be aware of that because the windows are original. They're from nineteen sixty. So, and there's no way to, the best windows in the district are actually on the front of the building over there. So, yeah, I mean, we, do we have to do it? No, we don't have to do it. I do know this. A decision on where we're moving forward would make more sense. And if I found out that we were, the decision was we were going to renovate, I would tell you, we would be short of foolish for not doing it now. Because they are never going to get cheaper. We will have to pay for all this work to be done again, other than the specs. Like that's, that won't have to be done. But we'll have to pay to have all that done. And so the cheapest moment to get these windows is right now. But we don't, that decision hasn't been made, I guess.
Going back to the primary school one, so just so I understand the sequence of events. You have to, you have to put it out for bid, you have to pick the winner of the bid.
If the word of contractor.
If the word and a contract, so basically you're on the hook for whatever the bid was. And then you get the grant.
And what are the chances of not getting the grant?
You can't get the grant unless you've actually, we've actually sat here and voted on that security vestibule.
Yeah, but even if you vote yes, I don't have to move forward.
Oh, okay. So if we vote yes, and then you start, you call the state of Ohio.
You voted yes contingent on the grant. Yeah. Which is kind of how I thought this would happen anyways.
Okay.
I've been thinking this process through because it's really bothered me. Because we did this, we did another grant through them and I didn't have to jump through these hoops. I, I just thought it was, they would say yes and we would have forty to go and voila.
So we can do that though? We can award the bid contingent on the grant?
I'll also tell you, like, I wouldn't want to do this unless we got the grant.
Right.
Because I can't sit here and say that I don't think the security at the primary school, I don't believe we're on, we're as safe as we've ever been. We have a secretary out there now. That's possible. This is just more of a, it creates a safer, it enhances our security. That's exactly what it does. And if we can have someone help pay for that, in my eyes, we, then I want to do it. But we also go back to that same question. If we're not keeping the primary school, I don't care if it's, I don't care if it's twenty thousand, but this is a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Thanks.
So more discussions later, but if you have questions, you can comment on them.
Thanks, Tom. So just a few updates from me. We have started the process with the strategic visioning committee. Those members of which there's about thirty of them have all received their emails about our first meeting coming up in November. We've also sent out those invitations for those who are identified for the key communicators meeting. And then Jen and I are going to work together on that key communicators meeting because the survey that went out had them rank order, different topics of order of importance of what they wanted to learn more about. And a lot of it was around what is the district's plan for facilities and also school finance. You know, where are we? Where are we planning on going? What does our financial future look like? So those are some areas that we'll be addressing with the key communicators group moving forward. And then just want to let you know that Charlene and I are working on a notice that'll be going out to all community and family members about the idea of a two-hour delay moving forward for inclement weather. The reason that we talked about that was the ability, well, one was you have to have a conversation with your transportation and food services department. So Francine came for, for those two departments to say, is it possible? Does it impact our ability to feed our students for lunch? Does it, you know, sometimes we have food service workers who are also bus drivers. And so just kind of looking at, will all those moving parts work if we do this? And the answer was yes. And then in talking to the principals about what does this do, you would just have an alternate schedule on that day where students would still be able to go to all their classes. So instead of it being a full day off. Also what it does for us is, what I have heard, not having been in Independence prior, is that the Independence Service Department does an amazing job of clearing the streets, getting it ready for the sixty thousand people who enter into this community every day for work, which is wonderful. And, you know, they do the, they do the little, they clear the sidewalks. It's great. Our own crew though does our parking lots for our buildings. And so trying to make sure that those parking lots are safe for our staff to park in. And also our staff come from outside of Independence. And so sometimes that is, you could have a school district closed right around the corner because of where they are on that freeway or in that snow trajectory. And it causes our staff to have not a very safe drive to work. And so the other positive with a two-hour delay is I would feel more comfortable calling a two-hour delay the night before, the evening before, to give parents enough notice. Because one thing you hear from parents is waking up at five thirty AM and then finding out you've got to get childcare or make other arrangements. That's difficult. And sometimes I love our weather people. I think I could be a weather person. It's the only job where you could be right like twenty-five percent of the time. So I feel like sometimes there's a lot of hype around, it's going to be the worst day, it's going, everyone's going to be closed. People kind of start folding like chairs. You know, districts talk to each other, what's your plan? What's your plan? A lot of districts will hold off to making that call until five thirty the next morning and then sometimes it's either too late. Or they called it off and it ends up that by like, you know, seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, when the sun comes out, you're like, oh, it's actually a better day. We didn't need to call off. So a two-hour delay would at least give the parents that time to be like, I'm just arriving to work late or I know somebody's going to pick my students up or whatever it is. And then if in the morning it was a horrible day, like it really was a bad day, that call would go out to say, it's no longer a two-hour delay. It is a full day off because of the weather. So it provides us with some flexibility. I think it will be well received by parents. I think too, it's beneficial for us to have our students in school if they can be in school, even if it is a shortened day. You know, they're, they're here, they're getting academics for a portion of, of the day. So that is something that we'll work on communicating to parents early so that they're well aware of that in our community. Any questions on that?
Thank you for doing that. Thank you for doing that work because it's something we've talked about in the past and we've just kind of been told that the, the community doesn't, would rather have no school than a couple. So I'm appreciative of that as a parent. So I thank you for doing that work.
Yeah. And again, I think Independence sometimes because it's insulated a little bit and it does have really good services, like you could have school, but just give us like a couple hours to at least get our staff here and give us a couple hours to get our parking lots cleared and walkways and make it all safe. And in the long run, you know, I don't anticipate us using the two-hour delay every week, but it does give us that flexibility. You know, when it's cold temperatures, it's always easier to make that call the night before because that doesn't necessarily change. It's when they're predicting snow and ice and is it really going to be snow and ice?
Well, it's the students driving to and from school too. That's the, the other big fear.
Yep.
I have.
And then last, we have our November PD bit, PD day is coming up on our election day. Our buildings will be closed, staff will be reporting. So I'm going to be working with the principals. Like I shared, the last professional development day, I was with the staff for a couple hours. Ideas to kind of do that again this time and continue some of our work. And then provide them with an opportunity, you know, to work within their teams and within their buildings. You know, just to do some of the, the work that we're asking them to do and to give them time to do it. Anything else? So I am so happy. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Janatovic. So I'm just to kind of set you up, Mr. Janatovic is our first one for the school year. So.
No pressure.
No pressure. As you know, in the past, the principals would attend every board meeting and kind of give you an update. On just about things that were happening in their building, events that might be occurring. And since we've started kind of the every other week administrative board reports, which really gives those principals and the directors an opportunity to share case, you know, two opportunities and two successes. I think it gives you an opportunity to kind of learn a little bit about what's going in the building as it relates to curriculum instruction and assessment. So I feel like that's been a benefit. So when I talked to the principals, I said, what I'd really like is for you to highlight your staff and students and things that you're doing in your building that are unique, that really kind of, that fit into kind of that curriculum instruction and assessment, positive behavior intervention supports. Things that I think that you would benefit from hearing about and learning about and having, you know, our teachers be a part of that. And so we kind of changed it where every principal has signed up for two board meetings throughout the year where they will come and present on a specific topic. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Janatovic, high school principal.
Welcome, everybody. Super excited always to be here. I like to call up Mrs. Stapansky, our lead staff as well. We are going to focus a little bit on mathematics today. We do have a small department and there are other teachers, but unfortunately Mr. Corvus did have a problem and couldn't make it today. Mrs. Gross, update on her. She had on maternity leave. She initially was going to come back after Christmas in January and she's like, I want to come back sooner. Can I come back before? And now she wants to come back after Thanksgiving. She's amazing. So we're looking forward to, to her having to join us. And Mrs. Loa, as she is, she is expecting. So, you know, we have a lot of excitement. Mrs. Stapansky is here. She's going to kind of work through both of this. But what we really wanted to talk about is, you know, it's kind of a book study. This is something that kind of organically happened. And the reason we chose it is because it kind of aligns with some of my thinking as, as just an individual. And it kind of aligns with some of the work that I know that Kelly's going to bring to us with some K-12 alignment. One of my big things, if you ever sit down with me and know Ted's observation is, I try to find opportunities where teachers have taken thinking away from kids. And then I try to find opportunities where they could have created thinking opportunities. So, you know, in a classroom when they save a child and they jump in and they didn't let the kid think through it, that was an opportunity where they took the thinking away from a child. Now, if there was a time where there weren't many thinking opportunities, we talked about where could the thinking occur? Where could that resilience and struggle come from? So that's something that I've believed in. And the math department, and this happened even organically before I got here, they started taking a look at that in our classroom. So first, what is the need for this, this thinking was, what did our data say? We have really four, we have four data sources, but four true data source, not true, but we have our PSAT data from eighth, ninth, I mean, ten and eleventh graders. We have our SAT data, we have AP data and we have end of course exam. Obviously we have behavioral data, we have attendance data, we have classroom data, all that type of stuff. But we have four outside audits that ultimately, I think Mr. Corvus's point was approved. I don't think he should have waited until after today. But those four pieces of data that really are truly outside audits for us to say, how are we doing compared to other school districts, similar school districts ourselves with pieces of growth? So we've looked at those data pieces, you know, PSAT data. One of the things that, you know, I think we recognize is, when you look at me, right, if you look at the bell curve, we really have our students that are falling on the right side, which is the positive side of the bell curve. However, if you look at our student distribution, a lot of our students fall on the wrong side of the bell curve, meaning that our scores look good, but there's a lot of growth for our students to occur. So some of our students are really performing at a high level that can be pulling up the need. But how do we hit all of our students? And how do we get all of our students to move to the right? When you look at our end of course of data, we have made some growth, but in mathematics, there's some areas where we really truly need to continue to push to the right. So that's kind of what our data states. So we got to do something that's there. What are our students saying? We have, in fact, I think so, and Kelly can tell me if you agree or disagree. Our high school has more mathematics courses for such a small district. So we have so many varied opportunities for students to do different pieces and have choice when they get to that level. But sometimes when students get up to that and they start taking statistics, they take advanced math, they take calc A B, pre calc B C, there becomes a little bit of a, I don't want to call it a dislodge, but there becomes that stagnation, that stalemate that occurs when students have hit standards. Well, we kind of talked about, there's a little bit of an alignment, but they talked about in their organic piece was, it's the thinking. Kids have done a great job of learning this, doing that, but now when you're coming to something that is more abstract, not concrete, how do I take everything that I've learned from this, apply it to that and do some high level mathematics? So that's what's really drove them to that. And teachers, what are teachers saying? And one thing we are hearing is we need K-12 alignment to be able to have a common language and an understanding of standards. But then we also hear, you know, this was taught, we went through this, but how do we get them to step out of that comfort zone? So with the combination of all that, they took it upon themselves to do that. And I'll let you talk about MMR if you want, unless you want me to add it into that piece.
May I talk about the pictures?
Yes.
I don't know if you've seen these pictures, but on the dissected tone in class, I guess I will talk about that in a while. And reasoning, it's called our MMR. Last year was our first year for it. I did a summer session training, four days for it, and then I just finished another four days in June. At the end of last school year, and I attend meetings twice a month through Zoom and then I go in person, three days, three times a year. I, I, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Ike at ESC. Do you know Ike? The math, he's the math coach. I think he works with.
He works with our middle school.
Yeah, he works with middle school and higher.
He did both, yeah.
Yes.
He's the one that, he talked a lot about building thinking classrooms in the MMR workshop. I bought it two summers ago, as you can tell by bookmarks. I was very excited about it. It's a lot of hands-on, but setting the tone here for the picture. The first four days, actually in MMR, it's the first ten days that you do hands-on activities. You're building your culture in your bathroom. You're getting the kids to talk math to each other. You're getting the kids to work with each other. You're getting them to feel comfortable about getting wrong answers and right answers. Well, I liked that so much when I presented it two years ago when I learned about it. Then on my first day last year, I did a tower. I don't know if you've heard of the spaghetti. You use spaghetti noodles and who could build the tallest tower with a marshmallow on top? Using tape, string, spaghetti noodles, marshmallow. They have eighteen minutes to work together as a team of three, trying to create the freestanding tower. I wasn't allowed to answer any questions. I said, okay, here's what you have. This is what you do. This year, we did Pringles. Each group got a big can of Pringles and their goal was to try to create a circle with their Pringles. Something different, not math related, but it really was, but it was hands-on activities, setting the tone, like I said. So I did it in all my classes because I liked, just like I said, I wanted the kids to feel comfortable in my class, but also working with each other. Something else than talking with, with the building thinking classroom. Sorry, I'm like really nervous.
You're doing great.
But I, but I truly believe in this. What I do in all my classes now, instead of just your typical, like I've had several of your kids, instead of, okay, here me handing out the notes, the kids sit down, okay, we're going to take these notes. Now you practice this and then we'll do another problem. Now you practice this. Now this year, they pick the notes up off the back counter, they leave them at their desk and then they go to the board. That's something that this often believes in, the kids standing. So they're at the board. I haven't taught them. They're in groups, working at the board, experimenting, going, oh, I don't know. Let's try this. Let's try this. So like what Mike talked about, they're doing the thinking. They have the prior knowledge that, oh, let's try it this way. Let's try it this way. If a group gets stuck, I might go over and I'll say, oh, look at group two, see what they have. They'll go look at group two, oh, and come back. This year I've noticed that there's a lot more math talk in the room, less of me talking. Another thing that he talks about is he talks about, I'm just giving you the link, sorry. He talks about taking away the front of the classroom. So instead of me standing here talking the whole time, if you guys are the chalkboard, like I'm constantly walking and looking and listening. So it's not so much me saying, you know, instructing, it's giving it back to the kids. Now I will say, I have honors algebra two and I have found that those kids. Struggle because they want to spoon that. Tell me how to do it. Let me mimic you. But we've been doing PSAT review and like what Mike said, they can't take what we've done and apply it to a difference, to a different situation. Like, I'm hoping that in the future we'll get there by baby steps, but there was a problem today. It was, it was three things that we have done, but they threw it all in one problem. things that we have done, but they threw it all in one problem. But I did sit at my desk and walk them through it on my document camera.
And to jump in, you know, something that, you know, being a former science teacher, I remember asking our physics students last year when they were doing the Great Pumpkin Drop, like, how did you calculate the force of that would be needed? Like, how did you know that this was the springs that you needed, and this was the box from this and all that? Like, there's some algebraic properties that are involved in this, and there was a struggle to make that connection, right? Like, if they asked them to do that algebraic problem, they probably did a really good job of it, but how do you take that to that next level? And it was kind of that aha moment for me, like, how do you get kids to think about mathematics from a numerical sense, from a holistic approach, and understanding where it is in there? I also do wanna take one little quick step back. So, we talked about mathematic models and reasoning. For those of you that might not be aware, it is a class that the Ohio Department of, I thought the Department of
Do.
Do, do now, um, has, it is an Algebra II equivalent course, um, which means that in the state of Ohio, you have to pass, you have to at least reach Algebra II in order to graduate from the state of Ohio. Um, there are some students that, depending on the pathway that you get to, Algebra II is a very challenging course to take, and having to take that as a senior might be something that, for students that maybe aren't going into the mathematical field, might not have been the course for them. Um, so they made it as an equivalent, but there is also cool other pathways with data sciences and things that we haven't built into yet, but it's, it's really a different way of thinking about mathematics, um, something that we had jumped in on the path, so it's all right.
No, if you wanna go to the next slide, do you have any questions?
We jumped through a lot of slides.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
So, how, did the whole math department do this book study?
Um, no. Actually, Mike Pennington, I approached him last year, maybe in March or April, and he purchased three of them. So, each high school teacher has one. Mark Corpus read it over the summer, and he's jumped in. The two of us are doing it. We've changed the way that we're doing notes.
Yep.
Um, the kids are writing what's important to them to help them remember. Um, so if they don't wanna take notes, they don't have to take notes.
Yep.
Anything else? We're excited by it. There is a new book that is grades K to five that came out this summer. Um, like I said, I've been teaching over 35 years, and I'm excited by this because, again, I'm hoping that it clicks more with the kids. Um, I don't know, I wanna say that it wasn't COVID, that maybe COVID contributed, and social media almost contributed to their short attention span. It's not like when our kids were in school, it's, so that's why I jumped on the bandwagon.
And I was, I was involved in Aurora when Aurora made a shift mathematically. And we read the book Mathematical Mindsets, which is very, fairly similar to this. Um, and once you saw comprehensive K through 12, the belief in this process aligned to standards, our test scores went through the roof, and we didn't focus on it. And it was amazing to see then what kids were doing and jumping off to the next level, and how it impacted the science classes, and how it impacted even English classes, because they were able to say, they were able to have conversations about learning and understanding different points of view, and that you maybe came to this conclusion, but how did you came to the conclusion? You provide evidence and you defend that, but you might disagree with me, so that really is an ELA standard that's taken place in that conversation. So, there's, there's some cool work to be done. We're in the very infancy stages of it, but it aligns to, I know, the Schlechte work and the belief that we're doing, um, and some of the curricular stuff, so I really wanted to, that's kind of that.
And hopefully, it will be a future book study.
I'd like to say, like, applaud you. Um, that's very dear to my heart, that, that approach, and I'm also biased too, because I feel like math is the most difficult subject to really go this way, because it's so process this, it's very linear, whereas like English, social studies, even science can lean on projects. But math, you've generated excitement with yourself, and I'm sure the engagement with your students is through the roof. You've tackled probably the hardest subject to do it, and so kudos to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and highlighting that. That was great.
Appreciate it.
All right, Tony, you're back up.
All right, public participation. It is the policy of the Independence Board of Education to hear public comment at board meetings. The public is invited to speak to any agenda items or any other school topics at this time. Comments should be limited to three minutes. Anyone? No? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
Here we go.
Here we go.
Tell us what to do.
This is
Relieving.
Going down the roller coaster now. Here we go. Okay.
So, the first item would be the approval of minutes.
Right.
And you'll say which dates, please.
Oh, okay, so that's, we're actually voting. I thought we weren't voting till I. We're voting on F?
No, we're not voting. You're just, we would just say, first item on consent agenda would be
Gotcha.
the approval of minutes
Okay.
for the dates of September 3rd and September 17th.
But you just said it. You want me to say it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll say it.
We're a learning institution, Mr. Avila. We're learning together.
I need to go into that math class and learn to read that book.
I'll be there, too.
At the board. So, approval of minutes, uh, for the, well, it would not be October 15th, what is it?
September 3rd.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, there we go. For the September 3rd and the September 17th of 2024. The September 3rd was a special meeting, and September 17th was the regular meeting.
So moved. No, there's no motions yet.
Okay.
We don't get to motion yet. We go consent, so now it'll be my turn, and I feel like I'm just taking over.
I know.
No, no.
What are you gonna do?
Keep going. Now it's my turn.
Are we recording this?
Yes. I can only imagine. Now it's my turn, and I'll do the finance report. So, for the treasures report for finances, um, the normal treasure report with the updates is pretty standard this month. Just a couple points of reference. Our revenue for first quarter, since this includes July through September, we're up 6.3% in revenue, and most of it's in state aid and local tax revenue, so that's exciting. Our expenses are also up 4.4% for first quarter. Um, so that is the non-exciting news of the financial report, and, um, the expenses are continuing to show a trend in rising. Obviously, the deficit spending last year showed that. But our cash balances, on the one chart, if you will look at it when you, when you get it, and I always pointed out, the cash balances are continuing to be less and less from year to year for month. So, like, September 24, 25 is less than September 24, which was less than 23. So, I mean, there's a clear depletion of cash reserves, which is absolutely a normal levy cycle item. So, when levies are created, they are created to give you a bank of money in the beginning, and you're expected to deplete it, and that bell curve is very much in effect for us, and we are on the downside of the bell curve. So, um, that will lead me into my next one about amendment of permanent appropriations and certificate of resources. So, our permanent appropriations that are done for July 1, they are our best guess at the time, which is not too, too, too solid, 'cause we have a lot of staff movements, and this year we have more staff movements than what I can see in historical records. So, um, we have quite a few of those. So, once you get all the new hires in place, we have, we have some salary, uh, changes that we need accounted for. Um, severance payments were paid out, so now I have that total that I can adjust for the corresponding benefits that will go with that. One of the things the Health Insurance Committee talked about today was our 13% premium increase the district took this year, along with our dental increase of 20%. So, we were hit pretty, pretty heavy with some premium increases that historically usually don't see quite that high, so we need to, we need to continue to work through that. Other things in the general fund you'll see is, um, Kelly and I are working on some curriculum things we want to do and need funding for to start implementing and getting the districts set this year so that they can be in full swing next year, along with a couple professional service contracts and agreements that are just necessary to do for, uh, normal operating business. Food services, I went and increased, I'm asking for an increase in that one to match the salary spend that, that would be. Um, a couple others, you'll see, in the O-22 fund, I'm asking for an increase so that we can pay our OHSA tournaments, and our first tournament, I believe, is volleyball being held next week here. So, it's exciting. Um, but with that, there is also a few costs that we have to account for. And then the student activities, as the student activity funds get set, we have a couple, uh, changes that we need to make in those funds. Then, the others, you'll see in the 500 funds, those are all federal funds that we get through this. They flow through something called the CCIP, which Kelly and I jointly monitor and administer. So, um, another item following up appropriations will be your federal funding acceptance. Our IDA funds, those are for special education services that we utilize, and most of that money is used, um, through the ESC, through different intervention specialists and intervention programming. So, that's a bulk of that money. Title I, which is for literacy improvement and enhancement and literacy coaching, and also some community engagement falls under that fund, and so we have those things coming up. Student enrichment is another federal fund that we get. Uh, early childhood education, this is the first year in a couple years that we were awarded some early childhood education funding for preschool, so that's really exciting on the student services side. And lastly, the Title II, which is, um, it's called improving teacher quality, and it's really a professional development resource that Kelly can utilize to help bring some professional development opportunities to staff. So, those are the funds I'm explaining now, so number three will be really quick. And that, those all require appropriations. So, in the federal funding, just to give you some background to that, um, if you don't utilize all the funds, you get carryover funding for it. So, if your allocation last year might be $10,000, and you only use $5,000, I'm using this as an example, $5,000 will roll over. So, once they do the rollovers, which are called reallocations, those came in, um, actually, it's like two or three weeks ago. So, we'll be able to add those in, and that's where all these changes are coming from, is the carryovers are in. And sometimes you get additional funding if they reallocate through all the districts. So, there's a couple reasons why you may see that. So, typically, we see a change right now in the fall, and sometimes in early spring, we'll see another change that will allow us to, um, increase our funding. Sometimes it's a decrease, but typically it's an increase with that. So, those are the appropriation changes of corresponding with the certificate of resources, and, um, once that is approved, I will submit to the county auditor tomorrow so that they can do the due need to exceed verification for us to ensure everything is good with that. Um, but what, what the appropriation document is showing me in my perspective and lens is that we need to look at a cul, a culture of cost containment. So, what I mean by that is, we need to jointly, for all of us, look at if things are necessary, needs versus wants, kind of those analyses, to see where we wanna put our funding. And again, like, I even heard this evening about vertical alignment, like, so we wanna make sure that our fundings, what we're spending our money on, is aligned to get what the strategic visioning process is going to produce. So, um, that's a really important piece that both Kelly and I recognize significantly is strategic visioning guides what we purchase, and we need to do that in a cost containment method. And, um, I'm here to hopefully try to help guide some of those conversations so that we can hopefully effectively achieve that as a culture. So, that might be a little different any, um, than what the culture might be used to in the district, but I really believe we need to move that direction. Um, and then we have some approvals of then and nows. Those are, I know one was a, um, forgive me, it's a district extermination pest control services, um, and then some replacement helmets, and both of which, I said this last time, I think we're done with transition, um, purchases that are coming through. I think we're done with purchases. I'm hoping no more show up on the doorstep. Um, so, uh, this is, again, going back to a culture of trying to make sure that going forward, everyone really does understand a purchase order is in place before you go and purchase things, and that helps, uh, eliminate these to ever be on our own agenda. So, those, and then the last item I have in treasures report consent would be a donation acceptance. We have a wonderful donation, a very generous one, of $600 to the American Sign Language National Honor Society. So, and that, um, was to help pay for scholarships for students, so that was wonderful. Um, and I'd ask for you to just accept that so that we can get a letter of acceptance to them.
All right, two things. First, I, I did say this already, but I just wanna thank both Jen and Kelly for your patience in this, the way we used to do things, to the way we're gonna be moving to do things with everyone. And there just, change is hard sometimes, and so I just really appreciate both of you and your, um, being patient. And then, so just so I understand and everyone understands through these public, um, meetings and agendas that we are working on board docs, can they pull up your financial, September financial report there?
Absolutely.
'Cause I just wanna say that I love this, um, your check register. I've never seen that before. It just, it really helps, like, the, the itemized things to just kind of give us a understanding of all the things that are, that we're paying for. So, I thank you for, for putting that out there.
It is, uh, anyone can just click on the PDF, and they'll have access
Okay.
to any one of those scanned documents.
Great. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And now, in consent, we would move to superintendent recommendations.
I don't do that, do I? I, you want me to do all those?
Yeah, if you wanna comment on any of them.
Oh, comment on any. Oh, gotcha. Okay. Look, and I'm like, we didn't do this, this is, this is a little bit of a new way. Um, do you have any questions? You know, this is actually, this is a great time to tell all of those listening out there, when they're watching the recording, that, um, just so how the process works, um, when a board agenda is set, um, a week beforehand, the treasurer and the superintendent, so Jen and I, meet with the board president and vice president, and we go through everything on the agenda, um, and they ask some clarifying questions. Um, we give them some information that maybe wasn't there that we need to add in, um, and so that conversation happens. As soon as that conversation is completed, we update anything else we need to on the board agenda, and then it goes live for the board members, um, on Friday. Um, wait, yes, right?
Or even sooner.
Or even sooner. If we, if we have it done, we give it to the board members. The board members then have an opportunity before the public does to also then, the rest of the board members, go through the agenda. They have an opportunity to reach out to Jen or I and say, hey, I have a question, or they might ask the board president or the vice president, um, about things that we're gonna be voting on. Explain to me why Lynn Briler's name is back on again, like, explain the process for some of these things. Um, and so, if it's something that really the whole group needs to know, then we'll make sure that we communicate that, so that when we come to this meeting on Tuesday and we go through the consent agenda and we go to vote, um, and there's not a lot of discussion, it doesn't mean that the board doesn't care about the items that are on the consent agenda, that they're just a, um, rubber stamp board that goes, whatever you put on there, we're gonna vote yes for. The due diligence has been a lot of times done before this meeting. Um, and so, just as we go through these, when there aren't questions from the board, it's normally because their questions have already been answered, uh, and they feel confident in the voting process that we're about to undertake. Uh, so just, and, and so, something, sometimes people will say, well, the board just seems like they always just agree on everything, and they're always gonna vote, um, all the same way and all vote yes. Um, sometimes that's true, and other times, there's times where they won't agree, but for the most part, they've had their questions answered beforehand, um, and sometimes it is that clarity that then allows them to be like, yes, I can vote yes on this. So, just wanted to kind of let everybody know that and remind people that.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah. So, while you may, I know that there have been some questions on the superintendent's recommendations, but if there's anything here, um, that anybody wanted to ask again?
If van purchase, that's basically taking the place of a, of a bus that we would have to send out for maybe the golf team.
Right. We talked about, um, a lot in our cabinet meeting, you know, obviously, transportation has been on our minds a lot. Um, this has been a really rough year as it relates to transportation. And, um, you know, we've started thinking about what are some creative ways that we might be able to strengthen, um, our transportation, um, especially in, like, the fall season with as many sports as we transport. Golf is a very unique one where some kids start at one time and kids start at another tee time. It makes things difficult with our ending time for our school days. So, for instance, you know, one of the ideas might be that we ask our coaches to get a van license. Um, if we have a van and the team is enough students that it could fit in that van, to have a van available that a coach could drive with the students and take that off of the trip list of our bus drivers, uh, would be huge for us. Um, when we look at, um, you know, currently, anything, if, if something, we had a situation where we needed to bus some special education students or someone out of district, but it was only a few students, to not have to rely or to take, you know, potentially students who live at the farthest end and not have them on a bus to shorten that bus time and say, you're gonna be in a van, um, because van license is different than a CDL license. Um, some might say a little bit easier to obtain, um, a van license versus a CDL. Um, and so, I think too, that might open the doors for more people, um, who might not be as intimidated to drive a van as they are a bus, to say, I'd be willing to, to drive a van. who might not be as intimidated to drive a van as they are a bus, to say, I'd be willing to, to drive a van. So having another van, I think, will benefit us in the long run.
And that van, or that driving the van could be open to anybody.
Yes.
Not just, so if...
We have that actually posted.
So we actually, so hot off the press today, we actually, Francine looked at, the driver made a suggestion. There's a, looking at not just, we have three students that live on, I mean, opposite ends of town, and it's, it's a matter of 10 to 15 minute increase in the route. And so the van idea started there, and then, then we started saying, like, how can we utilize a van fleet differently? Like, maybe we need to look at this differently, not just in tennis or restaurant trips or golf trips, but can we, can we look at, maybe we have a fleet of, a fleet of vans. Sure enough, I think one or two kids were just added to a van route, taken off the bus, they're in. The driver is estimating a 10 minute decrease in their route, just because of the one student. And it's just because it's, it's luck of the draw. A neighborhood may have a bunch of students for years, and then when they graduate, maybe there's only one left. And so, I mean, that's, that's in close, every district you go to. So we're trying to be creative in saying, well, vans, we can, we can get more vans. We're struggling with people.
Right. And so like that tree lawn, you have to go all the way down, fit, fits water, to pick up probably three kids, right? One kid?
If they had another van.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to look at it a little bit differently. We met with a transportation department last week and just tried to, you know, have some different ideas. And we'll be, Francine and I are going to be presenting some different thoughts for you through a work session that we might have to look at. We just have to continue to look at transportation differently. And really communicate, I've said this, and actually, I'm glad that I'm even talking right now because for...
Those who are listening, our transportation department makes it look like it's easy. What you don't see are the little, the, the pieces of paper every day that have a name, an arrow, a name, an arrow, a name, because we are trying to make it look like we are running seamlessly. And that is not, there isn't a day that it isn't a struggle. There isn't a day that it isn't a struggle to cover all of our routes and provide a service that everybody thinks, well, this is easy. And so when we run A-B routes, that's a day where all the arrows and the post-it notes didn't work. And so we've got to start looking differently now, and the vans are just, it was a fun aha moment. So I'm, I'm excited to see how we might make this look a little different moving forward.
Tom, don't things continue to change? I mean, like, what started day one in October could be different. I mean, both ways. So like, we're constantly trying to streamline and update.
Well, imagine if, imagine if you were forced to put a plan together by August 20th, I don't know what our first day of school was, and you were expected to juggle this many things to happen. But then come October 15th, you realize there's not as many things juggling on your plate. And that's what our bus system is. We have a lot of people signing up, and we're making routes based on that. And then all of a sudden, we have buses that don't look like that we have four. I can assure you that our bus numbers are, are in the area of 45 to 50 for every bus. And I can also assure you, you will find buses that don't even have close to that. And so this, we're in this, and the state of Ohio has to do something about this, even down to the van thing. I've been, I, once upon a time, drove in North Carolina, and I didn't have my CDL, but I was able to drive up to 12 passengers, and I was a coach, and so I had to do that. But in Ohio, it's nine, like, it's, it's less. And so either we've got to expand the smaller amount of group that we can deliver, something's got to give, and make no mistake about it, that test for the bus driver, that's challenging. If you talk to a bus driver, by the way, I've talked to three of them about this conversation, they would rather drive a bus than a van. They said because there, you can see better, you can see so much more on a bus. And I said, oh, okay, well, I don't think that way, but that's fine. I'd rather drive a van full of, you know, 10 students, 12 students, whatever.
And you know, and to that point, just for people to know, I mean, we have custodians who we pull off the buildings to drive daily, so that isn't something...
We have a maintenance guy who has driven every single day. So when we're slow to get projects done, it's because his day is consumed of two and a half hours off of his normal stuff. And so, and then the custodians, buildings being left empty, and it's just not, it's not a sustainable practice right now.
And we are trying to hire.
We are, we are.
Saw that bus at the, at the football game, our, all our drivers came and handed out flyers and hoping, praying.
I'm really glad to see the incorporation of vans. We talked about that like 15 or so years ago, and before Francine became, well, she was actually still a driver. So the person before that was just adamantly old school, we'll just say, and would not consider it. It's like, it is the dumbest thing I've ever seen, because we have a whole doggone bus going down to Cleveland State with six swimmers. And it was like, you know, you are, well, we'll just say, it was the most ridiculous argument among several I had at that point. But I'm so glad to see that we're using vans, it just, I mean...
Also quickly coming to, like, I sat in on a meeting last week as well about an electric bus, and so electric vans are coming as well, there's grants out there, so looking to see if we can take advantage of some cost-saving measures. You know, every, every other year, every two years, we look to purchase a bus. As our fleet, as our routes have shrunk, we haven't had to replace because we aren't using every one of these buses, so we recycle them through. But vans, the, the electric world's coming too.
You're going to plug it into the awning we have out there for our bus garage.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, there's a whole process.
So what's the, what's the Ohio rule under, you said North Carolina's 12, what's Ohio?
I'm assuming it was 12, because that's how I had to decide if I was taking the scorekeeper or the video person when I was coaching. And when I had an injured player, it worked out well, because I could take them both. That's a true story, by the way.
Nine is Ohio.
Yeah, nine's our limit, I don't know why.
And how much to, how many, how many will the van fit?
Well, it's a nine-passenger van, so, yeah.
How many vans does the district own right now?
We have two, and only one can transport people. The other one is like kind of empty, and we transport stuff. And so this will be a second one.
A second one for students or people.
Students or people too.
That's all I have.
All right, now we're on to section I, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. You get to vote now?
You get to vote now.
Okay, all right. So section I is the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Sears?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasky?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Avila. Mr. Avila?
Yes. Next is personnel and the supplementals, and just as a disclaimer, my brother-in-law, so I'll be abstaining from this, because my brother-in-law is on the supplemental list. He's a middle school basketball coach, so... Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Lasky?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Sears?
Yes.
Mr. Avila?
Abstain. All right, any additional items, Mrs. Cogan?
Yes, so we have some informational, just some dates there that were thrown in. Friday, October 25th is the end of the first grading period. Tuesday, November 5th is election day, so no school for the students. Please exercise your right to vote, no matter what your party is or what's going on. And hopefully, many of our students who are 18 within the school, I know that there was a big push to register for them, for them to vote, so exciting time for those first-time voters in a big election as well. And then the next one is a board member discussion, potentially some action. But, so the decision was to reschedule the November 5th work session, so that meeting will be rescheduled. And I'm going to jump to three. So I did reach out to the Ohio School Boards Association. They are able to provide us with a free room at the state conference. So we are able to meet that afternoon on Monday. We could not do the morning. So it will be, I think it's like 1:00 to 4:00?
2:00 to 5:00.
2:00 to 5:00. 2:00 to 5:00 on that Monday.
Well, that's when my meeting is for delegate.
Yeah, so it's, what, is it, is it the whole time?
I think it's from, I put it in the calendar. It is from 2:30 to 4:00.
Okay, well, let's see what we can do. I might be able to email them and say, is there anything else if we can...
And I don't know if it runs the whole time.
Yeah, and I'll find out.
Okay.
Although I've heard it's a good meeting to attend, so...
Okay.
I'll, I'll reach back out to them and see what I can do. So, but is everybody okay with that, if we have a work session instead of doing it on the 5th, because there were some conflicting scheduling issues? Okay. And then obviously, the school board conference, the 11th through the 13th. All right.
And just to follow up about the special meeting in Columbus that we'll be having. What room?
B-142.
B-142.
B-142, maybe.
I think, and this is just me speaking, there's two things I want to discuss, and obviously, it's been a crazy 2024, and I think the last beast we have to slay, if you will, is what we're doing with the buildings. And I think we need to be prepared to articulate each other's positions, and, and as Kelly and Jen said, and they are not wrong, they're 100% right, along with Tom, just give us some direction. What are we going to do? And I think we can't kick this can down the road. I think we have to make a decision by the end of this calendar year and tell the community. So I've been, you know, in my free time, just been jotting down my range of thoughts, and I just want to hear everybody else's and just kind of go from there. And one other thing that maybe, it's, it's important, but not, maybe not as, I don't know, but I've been in contact with some other school districts about review processes for our superintendent and our treasurer. Lynn, I know that you've always said, I don't know what the right way is, but I just know the way we've been doing it has been, is, we don't think it's the right way to do it. So just trying to get some ideas and whatnot from different school districts and, and go from there. So that's, so that's just something else I wanted to bring up. So I'll, I'll hopefully have some samples, and we can go, we can go from there. And also, it does help our administrative team in terms of, okay, these are things that we want you to focus on, and these are things you're going to be, for lack of a better word, that we would like to see emphasized and tangible or intangible, so things of that sort. So those two things in our three hours when we're in that room will be, I don't know, just things that I wanted, that I think that we need to talk about, so, while we're down there, so...
And just because we have four hours, it doesn't mean we have to use, but I just, I just don't leave that...
Well, we do have a heart stop.
They will kick us out.
They will kick us out.
How do we end, Jen? Toni asked for a motion to adjourn.
Now we adjourn.
Get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And we try to say the names correctly. Mrs. Lasky?
Yes.
Mrs. Sears?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Avila?
Yes.
Time of record, 7:19.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, you did an awesome job. Thank you for staying and presenting. Thank you, Mr. Janet.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.